Good evening. I'll call the meeting of the Orman Beach City Commission to order. It is November 16th, 2021 at exactly 7:00 PM. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in this evening by our city engineer, Alex Schuman, and our planning director, Stephen Spraker. They served as greeters tonight. And I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. I'll start with the commission. To my right and your left from Zone 1, we have Commissioner Dwight Selby.
Good evening.
Next up is Commissioner Troy Kent from Zone 2.
Good evening, everybody.
To my left and your right, we have Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
And then from Zone 4, Commissioner Rob Littleton. We also have Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart with us. Our city attorney, Randy Hayes. Our city manager, Joyce Shanahan. Assistant city manager, Claire Whitley. And for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones, and we will have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you'll rise for the invocation, it's given by Pastor Jason Holt from Tomoka Christian Church.
Father God, we just paused to say thank you, God, for your goodness, for the abundant life that you've given us, God, that's evident all around, God, that we get to call this place home, a place that we can pray openly and freely, and God, that we get to live in a city that wants to begin their meetings in prayer to you to seek wisdom. And so, God, we also just thank you for those that you have appointed in leadership over us and over this city. And God, we just pray for wisdom and guidance over their decisions and the directions that we are headed. And so, Father, we invite you into this place tonight, God, for a spirit of peace, a spirit of wisdom, and your guidance and grace to fall on us. Father, we love you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is surprise proclamation time. I don't know if any of you have been here when we've had a surprise proclamation before, but it's a great way to start a meeting. And so, I would ask Siobhan Daly to come forward. She's our surprise recipient tonight. And Siobhan, your family's here. I'll ask them to come forward as well, and maybe some Casements Guild members. Bring the whole crowd forward. Siobhan is an amazing person. She's one of our treasured city staff members. She has a beautiful voice. One of the best things about her is that she loves people, and she treats people well, and I think they love her back in turn. We're going to get a picture with everybody when we're done, so don't go anywhere. Whereas, Siobhan Daly serves as the Cultural Center Coordinator at the Casements. In September of 2001, Siobhan began her career with the city of Orman Beach as an office assistant at the senior center. She became a coordinator a year later, with a short stint as the acting cultural center coordinator at the Casements a few years later. Siobhan was promoted in 2006 to her current position with the Casements and has been leading the charge for all events and programming there ever since. And whereas Siobhan is known as the queen of the Casements for managing the historic landmark with ease through her poise, grace, and elegance, Siobhan works tirelessly to ensure all programs, events, and classes are executed seamlessly and to perfection. Visitors shower her with high praise for their positive experiences and interactions. Siobhan is an excellent mentor, role model, and a great friend to her fellow employees. And whereas Siobhan had many challenges in the last few years due to the pandemic, she's done a remarkable job continuing to pique interest with virtual presentations, including craft videos, fun facts about the Casements, Once Upon a Storytime, Millionaire Mondays, and a virtual Earth Day contest. As the transition to reopening occurred, Siobhan threw herself into Orman Main Street's Celtic Festival and Orman Beach Live, which were well-attended public events. Weddings, receptions, meetings, movies on the Halifax, Storytime, and all regular programming are now back on track under Siobhan's guidance. And whereas the Florida Festivals and Events Association's mission is to promote and strengthen the festival, event, and fair industry in Florida, the association has presented nearly 2,000 awards recognizing the creative and technical innovations of its members. One such member is our very own Siobhan Daly. Due to her innovation, creative ideas, and ability to think out of the box, Siobhan has earned the city of Orman Beach statewide recognition at the annual Florida Festivals and Events Association Convention and Trade Show for three consecutive years. The numerous awards include first place in 2019 for EnviroCamp in the category of educational programming, second place in 2020 for Storytime in the category of children's programming, and second place in 2021 for Millionaire Monday in the category of educational programming. I'm starting to sweat, Siobhan. This is a long one. Whereas, Siobhan is always looking for ways to attract new visitors and improve events at the Casements in order to provide the best quality of life that distinguishes Orman Beach from other cities. Today, we celebrate these incredible achievements with Siobhan, her staff at the Casements, and all of Leisure Services. Now, therefore, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire commission of the city of Orman Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 16th, 2021, as a day to recognize Siobhan Daly in the city of Orman Beach, and urge all residents to join me in congratulating her on her well-deserved accomplishments at the Casements. Congratulations.
my family. So, I really appreciate this. But I just have to say, I've always envied Brian for having a day named after him. So, this pleases me that now I'm a level with him, and I have a day. So, thank you so very much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tonight, we start with Travis Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Travis Sargent, 406 North B Street. I'd just like to say thank you to Leisure Services for the Veterans Day Drive-Thru Lunch Event. It was very good. Commissioner Persis, Mayor, Commissioner Selby were there passing out food, and the food was great. Thank you to the Orman Art Museum for their Veterans Day event as well. And thank you for the new signs that are going up Long Beach Street for the speed signs. The first one was installed today at Rosewood. It's not functioning yet, but hopefully these signs will help reduce the speed along North Beach Street. And lastly, I would like to talk to you about the Orman Beach Police Department. Currently, there are authorized a staff of 71 sworn officers with 11 vacancies, five more out on military leave or medical leave, which means we're down 22%. It's a big number. We need to invest in recruitment and retention of our law enforcement officers. Let's not wait until a tragic event happens to address this public safety problem. Governor DeSantis is planning to offer $5,000 signing bonuses to law enforcement officers who are willing to relocate to Orman Beach. What is the city of Orman Beach going to do to get this number down? Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Next is Julia Truella.
Julia Truella, Orman Main Street. I just wanted to stop in this evening and remind everybody that Riverfest is this weekend, another headache for Siobhan, but a great event for us. Sorry, Siobhan. And we're expecting a record crowd, so I hope you'll all be there to join us Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00, and Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00. It's a free event, free parking. Thanks so much.
And last but not least is Ed Wilson.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Partington, and city staff. My name is Ed Wilson. I'm a third-generation Orman Beach resident and a second-generation employee, while also serving as an age General Employee Union President. I would like to start out by thanking the city staff and everyone who worked so hard on preparing the upcoming health care plan for the city employees. We are pleased that the increase in cost will not be passed on to the employees that are on individual coverage. I must point out the impact on those that have family coverage, though. An example of the impact on the employee with the three family members with the current proposal is an increase of $44 per pay period. At face value, this does not seem like much, but let's look at the numbers. There is currently a employee working for Public Works, and here is the impact to his family. Their current hourly rate is $12.60 an hour. That includes the 3.5% increase in their rate October 21. As a result, the insurance cost being passed on to them in January 2022... 20... Sorry. Employees will be earning... That employee will be earning $10.40 less per pay. Additionally, we must take into consideration a 6% increase in inflation that has a direct impact on working families. Your city employees continue to fall behind in area government employees with their wages and retirement. The city of Orman Beach has become a training ground for surrounding cities. Are you aware that an employee can leave and earn $2 to $4 more an hour for an open-entry level position by driving just 5 to 10 miles outside of our beautiful city? Also, are you aware that one of our departments within Public Works has gone through an excess of 20 employees in the last 24 months? There is also another department that has had an open position for more than four months and cannot even get people to apply for that position. Are you aware there's another department in Public Works that has switched to 12-hour shifts because they can't get applicants to cover the open positions that they have? This is the only way to make sure that the citizens are taken care of properly. Over the past 18 months, our workers have remained on the job every day as frontline essential workers to ensure day-to-day operations continue. You have very dedicated employees. They make sure that when the citizens use their utilities, it's safe and clean. Why would a maintenance worker, too, come to Orman Beach for $11.97 an hour when they can go to Daytona Beach or Deland for $15 an hour? Or Palm Coast for $15.46 an hour? That's a difference of $6,000 to $7,000 a year at an entry-level position. In closing, we want to bring this information that you may not have known. I'm not here to complain, but to ask your assistance to maintain the finest employees that this city can have. Truly love this city.
Thank you. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. These are the minutes from the city commission meeting on November 2nd, 2021. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Move approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we'll show those passed unanimously. The following items are community redevelopment items. The city commission serves as the community redevelopment agency of the city and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, at this time, we'll recess the city commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. As chairman of the CRA, I will open the public hearings and ask the secretary to read 6A by title, please.
Resolution Number 2021-176, a resolution of the city commission, also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Orman Beach, Florida, accepting a proposal for AM Weigel Construction, Inc. to provide construction management services regarding the Granada Boulevard Streetscape Sidewalk Banding Repair Project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-176, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And I'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, planning director. This project is within our community redevelopment area, so it is using funds that are specific to this CRA. These are not general fund dollars. So, the land area that goes from Orchard to A1A has a special taxing district that requires funds to be respent in this district. 2019, there was a master plan that was done, following up on the 2006 master plan. This was included in the master plan and was a very high project. The area of the streetscape project, again, goes from Orchard to A1A, and based on the direction of the last city commission meeting, includes some of the side streets. So, everywhere where there is a paver banding today, it would be repaired and replaced. Starting in 1989, there was a streetscape project, the first project in this community redevelopment area, and it contained almost nine miles of pavers. So, that would basically be from A1A all the way out to Airport Road. It also included planted areas, streetlights, and planer boxes. The goal was to make this corridor different than every other part of the city. What has happened over 30 years is that the pavers have, one, lost their colors because they're concrete pavers versus clay pavers, and the second is they have fallen off on the sidewalk throughout the district. Again, this has been a project that has been in our capital improvements project since 2016, and again, there has been savings in the community redevelopment area to fund this project. When the street grate were removed, they were patched. Part of this project would go through and repair these patches and make it consistent with the rest of the sidewalk. There are also allowances for sidewalk repair. If they're cracked or damaged, they would be repaired. The landscape areas would be expanded to be a more wide, walkable area, and then all the area would be pressure washed. Starting about 18 months ago, we started working with the Orman Beach Design Committee. We did mock-ups on North New Britton Avenue and at Washington by the Chamber of Commerce, and we went through a series of options, from pavers to integral shell, concrete. And the first colors were deemed too light by the Orman Main Street. So, their preference was a color that was darker in nature and more reddish that would stand out in the concrete areas called Yertruskin tile. The commission selected the Mesa beige as the color at the last time. Either color is well within the budget estimate, so switching colors does not affect the overall price. Staff is recommending approval of the streetscape repair project. In 1991, when the city did this project, they took over all maintenance responsibility. So, the maintenance of these sidewalks are the city's. They are not DOTs. We basically have the requirement to ensure that these are safe, walkable sidewalks.
Any questions for Stephen?
I do.
Commissioner Little.
Mr. Spraker, how would going with tile, I mean, clay, affect the price possibly?
The clay pavers?
Yes.
So, clay pavers would not lose their colors. If you go behind City Hall, where the Orman Main Street Park is, that circle, those are clay pavers. So, clay pavers are more expensive, probably one of the reasons they weren't used originally. They're more expensive, but they wouldn't lose their color, and if you set them on a rigid base, they're not going to have the cracking and the sloughing off that you're seeing now. So, they would need to be on a rigid base, and they would need to be clay pavers, and not the concrete pavers. It would fall on the same estimate that you have today. For the entire area, it'd be approximately $2.2 million.
And can you, Stephen, explain how the construction management process works under the statute? I don't know if that's you or Sean, but whoever.
I think Kelly's here, but I'll take a crack at it. So, the state statutes allows the city to do, basically, continuing construction contracts, and the city has four of them. So, you're allowed to use those continuing construction contractors, and basically, our selection was AM Weigel. So, AM Weigel has walked the project with us. They have done a number of alternatives, a number of bids, and for the reasons that were stated in your memorandum, we believe that they provide the best service. They do do competitive bidding, so the same process that we would use for competitively bidding, if we did it ourselves, they have used, and they've come up with the bid estimate within your package.
Okay. And you've given the not-to-exceed price here, included within that entire price. My understanding, under the statute, is there's limits on the amounts that a contractor can make as far as profit goes, percentages of the entire project. Is that correct?
Correct. And they have to provide us the not-to-exceed price, and so, they're locked into a... Not to get in one of those projects where it would spiral out of control. So, they are limited in the amount of profit that they can make. There's also a limit on the project itself. When we first initiated this, statute required, I think it was $2 million, was the upset limit. That was changed later to it's now $4 million is the upset limit that we can award construction management at risk projects.
That's by statute.
That's by...
For every city in the state. That's not for this particular project.
That's by Florida statute. I think it's 287.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had. I do have cards submitted to the CRA, and we start tonight with Dorian Burt.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Dorian Burt, 203 Pine Cone Trail. I know you guys have seen me up here for a long time, and I wrote to you all, all of you, on this issue. Main Street and the city staff for over 18 months has worked on this project to pick the right color and the right material for numerous reasons, aesthetics, delineations, just on and on, and I am just really asking you to vote again and go for the Yertruskin tile as opposed to the Mesa beige. You just have to have faith that it's going to be great.
Thank you. And next is Robert Coleman.
I just want to echo Dorian's sentiments. I'm the chairman of the design committee for Orman Main Street. We did spend a lot of time and effort on the product, on the color, what we think it will aesthetically look like in our downtown, and I'd like to just echo her sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, to the CRA for discussion. Who'd like to start? Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just, when we get ready to vote, I'd like to break it into three decisions, you know, the construction management, the side streets, and the color.
I don't see... Randy, any reason we can't do that? Sorry to catch you in the middle.
You're cutting me.
Okay. Anybody else on the commission have an objection to that? Anyone else want to... Commissioner Kent?
Yes. So, I was one of the three, or maybe it was four, I can't remember, that chose the Mesa beige. I love the way it looks, and I love the way we talked about how it resembles, like the Andy Romano Park and the Coquina around town. I'm glad we've had a little bit of time on this. I've been over to this exact location, behind the chamber, and looked at it again, and I'm one that's going to change my decision on the color tonight, because I feel like, even though I love it, it gets lost in the color of the concrete sidewalk. And as I was driving on Granada today, I was just thinking about, you know, the only people that are really going to be able to enjoy this Mesa beige are those that are walking and looking down. We don't want you walking and looking down. We want you walking and looking up. So, because of that, when we do break this up, I want the commission to know. I'm going to switch to the Yertruskin tile color. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Persis.
Yes, and I had a lot of time to look at it, too, but basically, I'm going to change my vote to the Yertruskin tile also, because I feel like Orman Main Street had their heart set on it, and I don't want them to be disappointed. They worked so hard on so many things for our city, and if that's what you love, that's what I love, so.
And I am glad we had some time to look at it as well. I saw what used to be an Yertruskin style in a project that had been done maybe four years ago, and it looked basically like Mesa beige, and I was very disappointed in the fading, the heavy fading that had occurred on that particular product. And so, it not only steered me away from Mesa beige, which was my original choice, but it also steered me away from the poured concrete because of that horrible fading. And there's a couple places around town that have it. I sent Joyce and Stephen, I think, a picture of what I saw, but... So, I've come back to the clay paver, and I think it was the one with the bevel, was my preferred option, because that will not fade. And you look at some of the clay paver streets in Orlando that have never faded after almost 100 years. You look right at the park out here next to City Hall, where there's a giant circle of clay pavers. They've never faded. I just think it would be easier to maintain and will hold its color consistently. When you look at what's there now, that is not a clay paver. That's a... Some type of product. Stephen, I can't remember. You told me what it was, but...
It is a colored concrete.
Colored concrete. Correct. And it did fade pretty badly, honestly. And so, I want the project to look as nice as it can with the least amount of maintenance for as long as it can, and that's why I'm in favor of the, I believe it's the beveled edge autumn...
Option 3.
Option 3, clay paper. Thank you. The side streets, just to comment on that, I think we absolutely need to do those so that everything is done at one time. We're maintaining what we have and what we're required to under the contract, and it gives the city and the downtown a consistent quality look. And then, as far as the construction management versus the putting it out for bid, I'm tempted to put it out for bid, honestly, since we're opening it back up as to color and as to whether to bid or not. I mean, having heard from the business community and the development community on this item and quite a number about being shocked at the cost of this and the price of this, it really made me question my decision to go with the construction management. So, you know, I'm wavering on that a little bit. The value in getting it done within six months is probably what would push me over the edge to go with construction management, but just so the commission knows what I'm thinking about, that's where I'm at on everything, so. Commissioner Kent?
Yeah, a quick question for staff about the Yertruskin tile. Who can come up and talk to me about the fading, non-fading of it? The mayor brings up a good point. So, what kind of lifeline are we talking about with the Yertruskin tile before the fade makes it look like Mesa beige?
So, the color is throughout the pore, so it's not just the top layer. So, there is...
Sorry to interrupt, but really quickly, the one that's out there right now, is that just the top layer?
No, it's throughout the pore. So, basically, when they mix the pore, the color and the shell go all throughout the pore.
Sorry to interrupt you, but that might save us some time here. So, the one that's out there now that doesn't look very good is a pore, and the Yertruskin tile is going to be the same type of pore, except have these fancy little rocks in it that the mayor says will look like Mesa beige after a few years. Is that pretty accurate?
There's a 2% fading that was quoted by the contractor, so that is not expected to fade. So, you know, over time, if there are chips, the color... So, you know, over time, if there are chips, the color remains consistent because it's poured throughout the four inches or six inches, depending on the location.
But you got to help me with this, though. You got to help me with this. If it's supposed to stay consistent, why do the ones out there that are poured, why don't they look like they did way back when? It's more than a 2% change.
Yeah. So if you're not happy with what's poured, then I would tell you not to select that option.
Are you guys talking about the same thing?
That's the reason why we did the mockups.
Are you talking about the existing pavers in the whole downtown? Yeah, not the samples that are over by the chamber.
I'm talking about the existing pavers that he said is a pore.
Yeah, I think you guys are talking about two different things.
We're talking about two different things. So we did a mockup on Washington Street that had these pores.
I've been there.
Right. So the existing pavers are colored concrete that were done in 1991. So if you, if they had put clay pavers, it would have, one, been more expensive, and, two, they would have lasted longer like the Main Street Park. What's on the streetscape now is not clay pavers. They're colored concrete.
Is that what you told me Etruscan tile is, colored concrete?
No, this is an integral shell pore. So that's different.
Okay.
So I thought you were telling me that.
Now we're talking apples to apples.
So if you're saying that the sample that we did doesn't meet your standards.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay, I misunderstood.
What I'm saying was, is this Etruscan tile that you're showing, is that going to fade like the current pavers that we have?
No. It is expected to fade, to fade 2% over its lifetime. The key is that it is poured throughout the entire, the entire depth of it, the four inches or the six inches.
Okay.
What's that? The concrete pavers will absolutely fade because they're a reduced type of material.
Sure.
If you want to use clay pavers, those would not fade.
Gotcha. And these will fade 2%. So the.
Over the lifetime.
Developer says, over the lifetime. Okay. And then, Mayor, because I didn't touch on the piece about going with our in-house contractor or going out to bid, I can tell you, again, I'm so glad this came back to us because I, too, will be voting for this to go out to bid. For the sheer, and I went back and forth on this at the last meeting, but just the sheer dollar amount here, you know? This way, it just is totally and completely, not that it wasn't, but totally and completely out for everybody to see, above board. May the, may the best bidder get the job. So that's where I am with it. And as far as the side streets, yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, just to state my position, I definitely would like to go out to bid. $2.2 million is way too much money to not allow a competitive bid opportunity. Side streets, absolutely. Yes, we should do the whole project. And of course, I continue to support the Etruscan tile, so.
I'll say, I do support the Etruscan tile. I'm fine with doing all the side streets. And I've thought about it a lot, but I would like to get this project done as quickly as possible. And so that's why I'm supportive of not going out to bid.
Understood. All right. I think we've covered all the bases. Commissioner Littleton, are you good with the side streets being included?
Yes. And I am, too.
Deputy Mayor Persis. So let's take the side streets first, since that's easiest.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to the CRA board to include the side streets in this project.
I second that motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
The next one will be the color of Etruscan tile for the entirety of this project.
I second that motion.
Moved and seconded. Let's have a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
No. And having seen what they end up looking like in a few years, I just can't vote for that. And so, understand, I'm outvoted, and that's, that's fine on that one.
And then the third one is having this project, sending it out to bid instead of keeping it in-house.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. And I think we need a roll call on this one as well.
Commissioner Persis?
No.
Commissioner Littleton?
No.
Commissioner Selby?
I'm sorry, this is.
This is to send it out to bid.
Sending it out to bid, competitive bidding. Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. All right. I think we are ready to close the public hearings. We will reconvene the city commission meeting and move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item A.
Anyone else? Just need a motion to adopt absent item A.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, all items minus item A.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And 7A.
Resolution number 2021-176, a resolution of the City Commission also acting as a community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, accepting a proposal for A.M. Weigel Construction, Inc. to provide construction management services regarding the Granada Boulevard streetscape sidewalk banding repair project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-176, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, well, just for obvious reasons, we, you know, needed to address this, so. I don't know. We've already decided the, I guess I need to make a motion on each of these three things, right? Just walk through the same process again?
Randy, you want to walk us through?
Yeah, since it was a recommendation from the CRA board to the commission as a governing body, that would be appropriate to do.
All right. So I'll move the color be changed to Etruscan tile.
I think we could, can we do it all as one recommendation from the CRA board and have, ask Commissioner Selby just to go through?
Good, fewer votes. I'll move that we, that we go out to bid versus construction management, that we include the side streets in the total project, and that the color be Etruscan tile.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
If we, if we don't want to go out to bid, we just vote no then.
On the whole thing?
On the whole thing. I mean, I don't want to vote no on the whole thing.
If you want to split it up for that reason, because you want your vote to be delineated, I think as long as there's no objection, we can do that. And maybe that was your intent, Commissioner? So let's, let's do that. We'll just have the same vote that the CRA just had.
So should I withdraw my motion?
Yes, please.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Perfect. And then, if you would, Commissioner Selby?
So I'll begin with the first item, that we go out for bid versus construction management.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
No.
Commissioner Littleton?
No.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. We'll call that 7A1, and now 7A2.
Okay, 7A2, that the side streets be included in the overall project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now 7A3.
That the color be changed to Etruscan tile.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
That's the second.
Susan, you can decide who was that seconder, and please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
And no. Thank you. Now would be the appropriate time if any commission member wishes to comment on the consent agenda. It's kind of a long one, but I think we've covered everything. If not, if the commission will bear with me, I had one audience comment card. So it's going to be three minutes, kind of in an unusual place. But I had somehow placed that at the back of the deck. I misshuffled, I guess you'd say. And if I could beg your indulgence, I'll ask Jim Schultz to come forward and give us his presentation. Thank you.
Hey, Jim.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. Thank you. I do like free speech, or at least inexpensive speech. But it's being, well, tampered with nationally. Just recently, let me start into this a little bit differently in what I was thinking. But Joe Rogan got on CNN and Sanjay Gupta and their medical man. And he, there was a thing about ivermectin being a horse medicine. And Rogan took exception to that. And under the concept that he was a millionaire. He could afford, he could afford human drugs. And anyways, he had Sanjay for three hours on the show. And finally, Sanjay, after being intimidated by Joe Rogan, admitted, yes, it was a human drug. And they shouldn't have lied about it. Yeah, I'm going with this. There's a whole lot of information. And a little follow-up on something that I had read about in May. And it was about ivermectin, actually. And there's this mystery of why some countries are not having an explosion of COVID. And it was mostly in countries that routinely use ivermectin for parasites. And routinely, and in Asia and Africa, many of the areas had virtually, almost no COVID. Well, anyways, the World Health Organization has been saying that's a lie. It doesn't work. Lancet, the new England Journal, pulled out articles which were a total fraud and they were exposed after a few weeks. But already, a lot of the countries in center, center, they're facing the combat. President Trump, you know, way back before the Biden. Anyways, he had also made an executive order that hydroxychloroquine, when it happened available, CDC overturned it because they didn't want it being used. Well, the reality is, the biggest state in India, Uttar Pradesh, had done the experiment. They had actually used it. They'd given it to their 241 million people. And guess what happened? They don't have COVID anymore. They were in a full-blown COVID. And so instead of a blinded study, we had a nation, almost our size, eliminate COVID.
Thank you, Jim. We'll move to 8A, public hearings. And I will open the public hearings, ask the city clerk to read 8A by title, please.
Ordinance number 2021-39, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts, and official zoning map of chapter 2, district and general regulations of the city of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 2.94 acres located at 295 Interchange Boulevard, Fallujah County, parcel number 4125-09-00-0070, from B-7 Highway Tourist Commercial with the planned business development, PBD, overlay to PBD, Planned Business Development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-39, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to speak on 8A and 8B at the same time.
Good evening. This is a two-part action. The first is a zoning map amendment, and the second is the issuance of development order. The property is located at 295 Interchange Boulevard. This would be Interchange Boulevard. I-95 is located here. South of the subject property would be the city of Ormond Beach. And this is the last property within the south plus the Interchange complex. So the first action is a zoning map amendment. It's seeking to go from a B7 zoning category to the planned business development. The purpose is to negotiate site-specific plan for development. So the site plan included in your package shows the perimeter in landscaping, including a green belt along I-95. The yellow is the building area. The unique feature about this site plan is the ability to access the building all the way throughout the properties. You can go around the building. There are two loading zones located there. The use is an indoor storage facility. It's a three-story indoor storage facility, very similar to what was done on Noble Road. The request for the planned development includes that use. To use the ITE parking trip generation manual is a low-trip generation based on the use. Our code does not recognize this style of use in either zoning category or the parking. There is a request to increase the wall signage to 100 square feet on both sides based on building size, and then shift the landscaping that would require along the perimeter to the outside of the building. The planning board recommended approval, seven to zero. Staff is also recommending approval. If you agree, Stephen, come back and forward to the commission on December 7.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen?
I have one.
Commissioner Littleton?
Um, Stephen, me, you, and one other resident attended this neighborhood meeting. Were your conditions about how the building's going to look from 95 met? You spoke about that?
They were met, and they see some of the issues with the building architecture, the site fencing around the property. There is no chain link within the building footprint. This is an excellent use for that code. It's a very low-trip generator. We guess all staff requests that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Stephen, can you just go over the signage request?
Sure. So our land code allows 154 square feet between the two sides. That would be the code allowance. They're requesting 100 square feet on each side. Based on the three-story nature of the building and the size of it, staff believes that request is appropriate.
So, and those would be, would they be on the north and south sides of the building?
It would be on the side facing I-95.
Oh, okay.
And then on the side facing.
Sure, sure, yeah. East and west. Okay, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I, too, agree with you relative to the use. You know, I think there was a proposal for an apartment complex on this site which would have generated, you know, hundreds of trips at that really terrible intersection where Interchange intersects with Route 40 right now. So I'm very happy to see this use there. I think that's a, it's a much better use from a traffic perspective.
Anyone else? Thank you, Stephen. I don't have any cards on 8A. Just need a motion and a second.
I'd like to move ordinance 2021-39.
I second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comments or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance number 2021-40, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development to be located at 295 Interchange Boulevard to be known as all aboard Storage-Interchange Depot, authorizing the construction of a three-story climate-controlled storage facility consisting of approximately 111,825 square feet with approximately 600 storage units, authorizing the use of the Institute of Traffic Engineers, ITE, parking generation requirements, two signs totaling 200 square feet, and the relocation of landscaping abutting the building to the site, establishing conditions and expirations of approval, and setting forth an effective date. This is first reading of ordinance number 2021-40, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. I don't, the only card I have on 8B is from the applicant. If anybody has any questions for him, but does.
I'll move ordinance 2021-40.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, comments, questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8C.
Ordinance number 2021-41, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
of Ormond Beach, Florida by adding chapter 18 Public Arts Program in the downtown overlay district, section 18-1 Legislative Findings, Purpose, Location, General Requirements, section 18-2 Definition, section 18-3 Approval Process, section 18-4 Review and Approval Criteria, and section 18-5 Ownership of Public Art, establishing a public art program in the downtown downtown overlay district, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-41, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to give us some background on this item.
So in 2019, there was a downtown action. One of the key components, one of the themes, was the provision of arts. This ordinance, it would establish the framework to allow public art, it establishes a criteria for review, the process. The next agenda item is for the Ormond Arts District Board. So basically, there would be a vibrant report that would provide the commission for recognition, any public art would be acted upon by the city commission. Any questions?
Any questions for Stephen?
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-41.
Second.
Moved and seconded, I did have one card, 8C one. Are you okay? It looks like it's going to be okay, but let's hear from Becky Parker.
Hello, I'm Becky Parker, I am here representing the Ormond Beach Arts District. I am the new president, and I should mention that I am trying to fill the shoes of Judith Stein, who's been president since 2017, so I, we were happy, really excited to see this on the agenda tonight, so thank you for prioritizing that and working on it. I know that this will affect our board and our board members certainly, so we want to have a little bit of opportunity to review the finer points of the ordinance and provide concerns to, especially to offer clarification and perhaps answer questions about our role in approving projects and programs that I think will certainly enhance our community and make more of a vibrant neighborhood.
Perfect, thank you. And we do have a vibrant, vibrant art community in Ormond Beach, we're lucky. Judith did a great job as president, and now Becky, I'm sure you'll do a great job as well. Julia, thank you for shepherding us through this, I know it's been a long task, but you stuck with it, and Randy's been wonderful making sure that it happened. And so now Deputy Mayor Persis, I think you had, did you make the motion already?
Yes.
You made the motion, was there a second?
I said.
Yes.
Perfect. Commissioner Selby, seconded. Any other comments or...
Well, I just wanted to say that I, you know, this has been in the works for a long time, and I just appreciate the ordinance, I think it, it's clear to me that Randy, that our city attorney had spent some serious time on this, he told me that there were multiple drafts of it to get it to where it is today, and that he was very creative in the way it's structured, and I think it, it does a great job of making sure that the city is not placed in any liability based on the federal code that, that artists are able to operate under, so. So with that, I'm, I'm excited about getting this going, getting our signal boxes decorated, and, and all the other possible art, public art projects that will come in the near future. And I want to thank Judith for her, her hard work in this for a long time, several years. Thank you.
Any more?
I'd like to comment. A couple of years ago, I would have been completely for this, but just last year, there was a whole year of people protesting over public art. That was mostly of the statutes, but it is public art, and I really think we're opening up a can of worms here. I'd rather this stay private with the murals in the downtown, and so I'll be voting now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we'll move to 8D.
Ordinance number 2021-42, an ordinance amending chapter 2 Administration, Article 6 Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Other Agencies, Division 2 enumerated of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida by adding a new section to be numbered entitled Section 2-230, Ormond Beach Arts District Board, establishing powers and duties and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-42, read by title only.
Thank you, I don't have any cards. Anybody have questions for Stephen on this? I think it was fairly straightforward.
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-42.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8E.
Ordinance number 2021-43, an ordinance amending and authorizing the execution of a second amended interlocal service boundary agreement between the City of Ormond Beach and County of Fallujah, Florida regarding the North US-1 joint planning and municipal service area, providing for recordation and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-43, read by title only.
Thank you, and again, we'll go to Stevens Breaker.
This is a request to amend the interlocal service boundary agreement between the City of Ormond Beach and Fallujah County. In 2014, the city established an interlocal service boundary agreement stretched along the US-1. The purpose was to basically take over land use, zoning code enforcement over that mark goes on the border, or to bring a border to the city's vision of the US-1 border. In 2019, the Plantation Oaks development was incorporated into the interlocal service boundary. The reason that it was incorporated was because there were enclaves within that larger area that would not allow the straight annexation to the city. The second amendment proposes to do a similar interlocal service boundary agreement based on enclaves. So the land area is along Addison Drive, this would be the Village of Pangu here, this would be the third phase of Plantation Oaks subdivision, and this would be Plantation Oaks Boulevard. Within that land area, there are enclaves. So these white areas are parcels that this property owner does not own, so there is an inability for them to come into the City of Ormond Beach to annex. There was a concept plan presented to the Site Plan Review Committee that sought a subdivision. The subdivision included the area that you see in red, and it also includes other properties owned by the applicants, which are in the current interlocal service boundary agreement. So a portion is inside it and a portion is outside it. The key thing about the interlocal service boundary agreement is we will have jurisdictional approval, a review and approval authority of the subdivision. Today, the subdivision could occur in Fallujah County, so they could go through Fallujah County, do every zone, and RB would be the utility reviewing. The separate application would require a proportion that is in the City of Ormond Beach, so they'd have two applications, one of which is the city with the utility review. The other option is to do this interlocal service boundary agreement, or Ormond Beach would be voted through and the approval authority of the subdivision. The interlocal service boundary does not require the enclave to annex into the City of Ormond Beach, so they can stay in unincorporated Fallujah County forever, or until such time that they connect utilities. Planning Board recommends approval 7 to 0. The Site Plan Review Committee also recommends approval of the ordinance. If approved, they would go to second reading on December 7, and then if approved, they are in the going of Fallujah County Council, they would need to also approve this interlocal service boundary agreement. If that happens, there would be a conference plan and zoning amendments for the property.
Any questions for Stephen? Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Stephen, so the, the applicant is the property owner?
The applicant is the City of Ormond Beach. So the agreement is between the City of Ormond Beach and Fallujah County.
Okay.
We are adhering to this based on a site plan application that, that they did, the concept plan, they intend to develop subdivision whether it's in, under Fallujah County or...
And the, the subdivision includes everything up there that's in, sort of looks like pink. Kind of looks like Etruscan tile, actually.
And it also includes lands that are along Addison and this rectangle here.
And so, and that, and that, that rectangle on the south part of it is already in the interlocal service boundary agreement, so this is to get all of those lands into the same jurisdiction.
And this, this doesn't, this doesn't have any setbacks, it doesn't have any development, all this does is allow the framework for future application.
Right, okay, okay, great, thank you.
And Stephen, and then all the people that are listed in the white, in the white areas, they will have to apply?
They will, they will stay unincorporated Fallujah County.
Right.
Their, their land use and zoning would be amended similar to what they had, and then unincorporated Fallujah County.
Okay.
So they're, they don't, they're not required to annex until such time that they desire to connect to utilities.
Right, got it.
And are they, they're white, so, I mean, they're, so they're not included in the interlocal service boundary agreement, or are they?
They would be part of the entire area.
Okay, okay.
But again, it doesn't require annexation.
Right, I get, I get it, but it, but they're not going to be, they're not going to be islands in the service, interlocal service boundary, they're going to be part, they're going to be...
They'd be part of it. Which is the whole reason why it has to be the interlocal service boundary agreement versus just the straight annexation.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. I do have one card, Luis Rodriguez.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Luis Rodriguez, 1155 Plantation Oaks Boulevard. Thank you for your service to our community. Since 2014, we've owned a home right in that area there, we've not had one issue, thank you for your recognition that we live in peace there. That being said, there is going to be changes to that area. I own the property that was labeled as Mr. Luis, with the correction to that is actually my property, it's actually, I mean, only property, I don't know if the commission can be pulled back up or not, but there's a concern that I have, and I would just like to bring to all the council if it's okay. As the development is being built, I've been able to look at the future plans, there will be a fountain pond to the north side, in fact, I don't know on what time, but that property moving to the left, the rectangle to the left, yes, that's it. So to the north side, there'll be a fountain, and then to the south side of my property, there'll be a private retention pond, and then directly behind me, there'll be homes there. I was, I did speak to the planning director, and I was told of a buffer zone being put behind me, but I don't know yet if there's a buffer zone on either side of me, so I would just ask if that could be considered if that's in the plans, so that way it's not directly on my property, and I'm the only one there, I would really, really appreciate that. Secondly, I know it was said that we're going to stay in the county, which is my preference. Is there anything that could be done for if we did connect to city water, and we did connect to sewers, that we can still keep our, our county residents rather than the city? I would like to connect, we do have laws of it, but I just, I'd like to stay unincorporated in Fallujah County, so I don't know if that could be considered, so just those two things, maybe if I have an explanation tonight, I'd really appreciate that. I would just like a little privacy, just kind of stay around our property if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Is there a motion and a second?
I move approval.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Comments? If not, please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will go to 8F.
Ordinance number 2021-44, an ordinance amending the City of Ormond Beach Comprehensive Plan by creating a new property rights element including goals, objectives, and policies, providing that private property rights are considered in local decision-making in accordance with Florida Statute Section 163.31776I, providing for transmitting copies of the notice and amendment to the state reviewing agencies, the County of Fallujah, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-44, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask Stephen to speak to this very briefly. I think we all understand it.
So this is a conference plan amendment that the state is requiring cities to do in order to process future remaining applications. The planning board did recommend approval 7 to 0. The next step would be to transmit it to the Fallujah County Management Commission, and joining agencies, second reading would be in January.
Any questions for Stephen?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, what's the, there's got to be more to the story, I mean, this is like...
It's our legislature at work. Anybody have...
It's required of all, all cities in Florida.
I know, but I mean, I feel like this is a preemption to something, you know, that, anybody have any insight on that? Randy, do you have any insight into what, what they're going, what's, what's really going on?
Glenn?
Yeah.
Don't leave. And I'm sorry to interrupt, but yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, I, I don't have any particular insight on this piece of legislation, something you got to do because the law's changed. You know, whether you consider a further erosion of home rule, which you could, you know, I mean, it is what it is, we got to do it to comply with the law, so.
Any other questions?
I would just ask, Mr. Breaker, how is this going to affect your daily job? Do you know at that current moment?
Well, it'll be part of our, part of our analysis, so basically, your decisions, this is one part of the conference plan that you're going to have to weigh for and against properties. So it'll be part of your decision-making process.
Well, I have another question then, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So when we're, when we, when you consider decision-making the right of the property owner, so this is the applicant property owner, or the neighboring property owners, or...
Well, the property owner could be, it could be a contract purchaser, or it could be that property. Basically, in your decisions, you have to consider the rights of the property owner for these policies established by the state legislature.
So is, I mean, is there, is there anything in this that we don't already do?
I think, at least in our reports, in what the planning board commission, there are a broad variety of criteria. And what we try to do, try to weigh for and against, and then you get testimony, and then you make a decision. So this is one more criteria in your overall decision in these type of development applications. So you can weigh it as strongly or as lightly as you choose to.
Thank you, Stephen. Just need a motion and a...
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-44.
I second the motion.
Moved and seconded, any further comments? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and I'm not going to close the public hearings yet because Mr. Storch passed up a card, and I believe he wanted to speak on 8E.
Which already passed.
Which already passed, so now you're working, I mean, you've got an uphill climb, it came to us with a 7O recommendation from planning board, but you put 8D on here, and I'm like, I'm not going back that far.
That's what I realized.
But if the commission will indulge me, I'm happy to, you came all this way, I'm happy to hear you on 8E.
I really appreciate that. And I just want to let you know that this is something that, you know, obviously, this is a piece that was half in the city area, half in the county area, it made no sense. And so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to work together, we're, we would, I don't want to say we far prefer working with the city, but it's nice to be able to work with a single entity, a single jurisdiction, the single jurisdiction that will be providing water and sewer, and as a result, what you're going to end up with is something that has a, a lower density, I should point out, than what you would be getting otherwise. So we've been working already with staff on this, and I just want to let you know that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And hopefully Stephen can work with you, your client's going to have lower taxes in the City of Ormond Beach.
I have told them that.
And better, better service.
[laughing]
I think it'll all, I think it'll all work out.
And I noticed that you're already talking to Mr. Rodriguez, was it?
I have.
Okay, great, so...
And on top of that, we're also talking, we talk to every enclave owner we can find.
Very good.
And in fact, we already have a contract for some of the others.
Very good.
So we're working together.
Very good.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, yep, appreciate that. And thank you, Commissioner, for that indulgence. At this time, I will...
Ordinance number 2021-38, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2020-2021 by amending the General Fund 001, Downtown Redevelopment Trust Fund 104, Storm Water Utility Fund 107, Airport Fund 108, Economic Development Fund 110, Grants Fund 116, Financial Debt Service Fund 205, 2004 Revenue Bond Fund 211, 2010 Beachfront Park Bond Fund 220, Capital Improvements Fund 301, Equipment Renewal and Replacement Fund 302, Transportation Improvements Fund 308, Facilities Renewal and Replacement Fund 317, Water and Wastewater Fund 401, Vehicle Replacement Fund 408, Renewal and Replacement Fund 409, Water, Wastewater Consolidated Debt Service Fund 414, Water System Impact Fee Fund 434, Wastewater System Impact Fee Fund 435, 2008, 2010 Water and Sewer Bond Fund 442, 2013 Water and Sewer Bond Fund 443, 2015 Water and Sewer Bond Fund 444, 2017 Water and Sewer Bond Fund 445, Solid Waste Fund 460, General Liability Fund 504, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2021-38, read by title only.
Thank you, I don't have any cards. I move for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we close out the evening with reports, suggestions, and requests, and we'll start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commission. At your dais tonight, I put the upcoming holiday event schedule.
Thank you about that.
So you can take that home and put it on your refrigerator, so there's no confusion about when we're, where we're supposed to be when, because we've got lots of stuff happening. Everybody's really excited about the Christmas parade. One of our little challenges about the Christmas parade is finding trucks. We usually get an auto dealer that lets us have trucks, but they're so few and far between. But Robert is working feverishly. He's working feverishly to find a new provider, so if not, we'll have to fall back to the Public Works trucks, they're not nearly as...
Julia, go.
Oh, you got them. Oh, you brought them, thank you. So that's great.
Breaking news.
I've also updated your schedule of workshops. On December 9th, we had our OB Life Westward Focus meeting, we had about 90 people in the audience, and at peak, we had 300 people online, so we had great participation. Of the people that were in the audience, over 80% of them were from that target area, the westward area, so we were glad about that, and most of those people have lived there for 20 years and more, so that's a good thing, so. We'll have our second meeting and final meeting on December 2nd, and we're going to talk about utilities, public safety, and environment. So we'll go from there. You have a shade meeting right after the first of the year, when the new year starts, we're going to have your first meeting in January, we'll have a collective bargaining session to talk with the commission in private about that. And this past week, the police department honored the memory of Bob Grimm. He was a police officer who lost his life in 2004, 17 years ago, on Nova Road. He was hit by another vehicle, and the family comes to that event, they didn't, they didn't start coming to that event, but they were, they sort of invited themselves to come. And I am grateful for the police department continuing to honor his memory and doing his memory justice for the service he gave and the life he gave for our community. And other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce. We'll move to Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
No comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Claire. And City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to start off with the OB Life meeting. I wanted to say thank you to staff. It was very well put together, I believe, I know the commission thinks that, and citizens have told me that, so we do appreciate your work, your very hard work. Secondly, I'll be attending the Low Impact Development Conference this Friday, and I hope to learn how we can practically use this development strategy in our city. And thirdly, you know, a couple, maybe it was a week and a half ago or something, we had that big rain event, and, I mean, I got to give kudos to our city. You know, we didn't have a lot of problems, considering, I mean, you know, Holly Hill had Ridgewood from Second to Third Street, and is basically, you know, a border park down there, and I've heard from a lot of citizens, you know, especially where I live, because it's kind of flooded before, that, you know, they were very impressed with what we've been able to do, and that goes, you know, to this commission, and city staff, and all the capital projects we've been doing over the years to mitigate those problems. And with that, I'll say happy Thanksgiving and good night.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I attended the Avalon Daytona OB Life meeting, and I stayed through the whole thing there, so I watched it in person, and it was really very well done. Staff did a great job of telling the history of the, of the annexation into the City of Daytona Beach, the negotiations that had, discussions that had gone on with the City of Ormond Beach, and, and how that, all that land ended up in the City of Daytona Beach. And also was, as, as City Manager Shanahan mentioned, there were a lot of people who live west of 95, and who have lived in Ormond Beach for a very long time. There was a couple of questions at the beginning that demographically sorted that out, and geographically sorted that out, and it was, it was, that was very impressive. And to know that there were another 300 at peak online is also very impressive. And I also attended the Bob Grimm Remembrance, and I, I, I think I met Bob Officer Grimm maybe once or twice, didn't really know him well, but I sure knew him by reputation. And I, I just want to share something with you all, that the, the, the police department normally does a change-of-shift briefing, you know, where the guy's going off, guys and gals going off shift, I guess meet with the guys and gals coming on shift. Well, they did that at, at the time that Officer Grimm was killed, which was around midnight, and, and it was a really good thing to do, because a lot of the officers that work for our department now, never met him, they never knew him, they didn't know him. So they were able to get some insight into the kind of person that he was, and it's not just about remembering somebody who served the department, but it's the kind of human being that he was, and for those who knew him, they knew that he was just a gem of a human being, always had a smile on his face, always had a positive word, was uplifting, encouraging, and just a really great human being, and for those of you who know his widow or his daughter, I guess he has more than one, but I know, I happen to know Tiffany. And anyway, I just think it was, it's a great thing to do, and I actually talked to his daughter Tiffany about this remembrance service, and I said, this must be difficult for you to come to this, recognizing, as I said that, that the anniversary of her dad's death happens every year anyway, right? So it's a difficult day, no matter what. And she told me that, she said, no, this is actually fantastic, and she said, she said, we love coming here, and we started coming, I, I don't remember how many years ago, but the police department started this process, and initially did not invite the family, because they didn't want to put any pressure on the family. Tiffany heard about it on social media or somewhere, and said, wow, we'd really like to be included in that in the future, and so that's how we got to where we are today. So I thought that was really, really special, and it shows the kind of leadership that our chief, Chief Godfrey, has, that, and he made a special point to ask the department and all of the people there to commit that this would, that we would never stop doing, remembering, you know, our fallen officer. So with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Commissioner Kent.
Okay, first tonight, Commissioner Selby, you mentioned it at the workshop earlier, so I just wanted to bring it up tonight. You talked about what was happening as far as, you know, residents being required, correct me if I'm wrong, but in more, planting more indigenous plants, saving water, things like that. I'll just tell you and the public, for 15 years, I've been talking about this, and if, I don't, I don't feel like we, as a government body, should ever project on our private citizens unless we're willing to eat our own medicine. So anytime you want to have a conversation about converting the medians that suck up millions upon millions upon millions of gallons of water every year, let me know, I'll be happy to jump in that conversation with you on purchasing vegetation that is drought-tolerant and bug-resistant. You know, we could look at something like perennial peanut, Asiatic jasmine, you know, the mayor mentioned that during the workshop as well. But grass is something that you have a picnic on, something you throw a football on or a frisbee, it's not something you put in the middle of your roadways, that you put pesticides on, and you put tens of millions of gallons of water on that run off into our waterways, help with those algae blooms and everything else. So I just say that because, you know, you mentioned that, it's the first time I've, I've heard you mention it, and just let you know, I'll, I'll be right there to help lead the charge to make those positive changes, if indeed you feel that way. The Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th at Memorial Gardens was spectacular, great, great event, and, you know, I, I love it, because I, listening to the stories of the different speakers, I tend to learn something at every one of the, at every single one of those events. And last but not least, happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your families and loved ones, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Persis.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I just wanted to let everyone know, I was just in New York City last weekend, and I saw so many fire trucks going up and down the streets all day and all night, and I tell you what, our fire trucks look so beautiful, so I just want to tell you, we are so lucky to have these new awesome fire trucks for our first responders and firemen, and the police cars look, look, look really great too, compared to what they're driving in New York City, so I, I did notice it. I just wanted to say, I was at the Veterans Day drive-through lunch last Tuesday, it was fabulous, Travis Sargent was there, along with a lot of residents in, in Ormond Beach coming through, getting their lunch, and it was wonderful to be able to personally thank people who have served our country, and it really means a lot, because really, because for all those people that are here and are not here, we wouldn't be here without them, so it's very meaningful to me. I also attended the Museum of Arts and Sciences Veteran Day Tribute, which was last Thursday. The speaker was amazing, he talked about sacrifice, and it really resonated with me about sacrificing, and we need to make sure that we understand what that means and how to do it. I just thought it was very poignant a topic, I appreciated it very much, and I think the audience felt the same way. I did have the opportunity to attend the Florida League of Cities last week, I, I listened to a lot of great comp, I went to a lot of great sessions, rather, I was very impressed with them. One that I went to, that I hope maybe I'm going to talk with Joyce Shanahan about, is the Race to Zero, I, I'm sure you've heard of it. It's basically a global campaign that rallies leadership and support from businesses, cities, and investors for a healthy, healthy, resilient, zero-carbon recovery. That's great for our, for our city. I know we don't have a whole lot of problem, too many problems with emissions and so forth, but we can always do a little bit better. I mean, I know in five years from now, 10 years from now, we won't have many gas, gas-driven cars, if everything's going electric, which will, will help, but it's something I think that I would like to look into. Also, I would like to have everybody in this room and up here, please join me in congratulating Commissioner Littleton, he's going to be a dad in April.
Let's give him a big round of applause.
Thank, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm so excited, you know, what, what an exciting thing to think about, it just makes you happy, happy all over, I just, just, I'm just really excited for your family, and so I'd like to wish everyone a very safe and happy Thanksgiving. Good night.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and congratulations, Commissioner Littleton, it is exciting, yep. Commissioner Littleton, you talked about the flood control that we have in the Central Park area, and I was pleased to know in that we were not mentioned in all the articles about flooding as a result of that nor'easter a week and a half ago. Kevin Gray does an amazing job under the supervision of Sean Finley in managing the Central Park lakes, and that's a project that is continuing. Commissioner Kent recalls, years ago, we started that process, and interconnected those lakes, which had a double benefit, not only did it provide an amazing opportunity for folks to get out and enjoy themselves, have recreational events, whether it was canoeing or paddleboarding, fishing, but also it provided an opportunity for flood prevention and flood control.
(inaudible) gave money for that.
Correct, correct. And now, there's one segment that's continuing, I think, on the southern side of that lake system, that's going to further help with, with flood control, help us push more water quicker, but, you know, we saw the problem, Commissioner, and we addressed it, and our staff sprang into action, it's taken several years, but we're in such better shape than we used to be, and the recreational part of that is just a bonus, so. It's a fascinating system, I mean, if you ever want Sean or Kevin to explain to you how they monitor it, how it works, how they coordinate the pumping based on the projected rainfall using weather systems, it really is a neat thing to see, and a lot of, that just happens, our residents don't even realize that that's going on, but it's there to protect them from, from flooding in, in what can be a low area. The Westward Ormond OB Life Series, many of you have already commented on that, I received allotted positive feedback, not only from our residents, but from fellow elected officials. We shared it with them beforehand, and shared the link with them afterwards, whether they're county officials, Daytona Beach city officials, Holly Hill city officials, but they appreciated the information and are pleased to be keeping an eye on that. Bob Grimm was a special human being, if you see the picture of him, he just had so much energy and effusive smile, and was a great example of a police officer, and so thank you all for making sure that he was remembered and continuing to do that on an annual basis. Ed Wilson, Public Works, you guys do an amazing job for our city, and you're an integral part of our city, so I'm always happy to hear from you as the representative of that union group. We collective bargain in Ormond Beach, and sometimes that's a clunky process, but it's worked well over the years, and I am always pleased to get information from you and consider it, and our staff will also bring us information, and we've got a shade meeting coming up on, on January 4th, and so it's very possible we'll deal with some of that information then, but I didn't want you to feel like we hadn't listened or, or heard your concerns, so thank you for, for sharing that with us, and I know we meet from time to time, so appreciate that. Let's see, the native Florida plant item, Stephen, you left at exactly the time I was going to ask you a question, that's just, you probably felt it coming, you're like, time to get out of here, but if there's a way to encourage that in our building code, if it's not there, if there's some incentive we can provide, or something we can do, I think that would be a great idea. Commissioner Kent brings up a good point in our medians, if there's a way to phase that in timed with our augmentation and our storage goals, I think that might be something that we could look at. It'd be an expensive process to just do it, but if we could phase it in over an appropriate time period, and it didn't affect our reuse, storage, and/or augmentation goals, maybe the entire commission could get on board with that, that might be something, be something to look at. The veterans lunch was amazing, I've never had such a vociferous response from our veterans before about how much they enjoyed that, and how thankful they were and appreciative. enjoyed that and how thankful they were and appreciative. I mean, the second or third day after that, I was like, if another person tells me how great that lunch was, I couldn't believe, staff just did an amazing job. I don't know who the, who the contractor or vendor was, but people really appreciated that. They appreciated the personal touch, Commissioner Selby and Deputy Mayor Persis, of you handing those to them, and so just rave reviews on the veterans lunch. The Ormond Memorial Art Museum Veterans Day Celebration is always wonderful and the speakers are, are always fantastic. I like to get there early and I park in kind of a, a secret spot, and I walk through the gardens and I say a little prayer that I don't mess the proclamation up, and then we, we start the ceremony. But as I walk through the gardens and looked at the different veterans' memorials and thought about the fact that returning heroes from a war built that museum and built those gardens, and how amazing that was, is because of the veterans that we have that beautiful sanctuary in the middle of our bustling, sometimes, city, and it's just impressive to me. And so we appreciate our veterans and are thankful for them. And I did want to give a shout out to Janet Van Wicklen, who takes care of those gardens. She does an amazing job and has for years, and that's why everything is so lush and beautiful in there. Commissioner Persis, I'm interested to hear more about the Race to Zero. I know that's a Florida League of Cities program or project, so I'm sure that information will be easy to find, but thank you for attending that conference and, and for bringing that up, and hopefully we can, we can hear more about that. And with that, at 8:32, we are adjourned. Thank you all. I just think that happens sometimes. Gems was at the very back of all the cards? Not a big deal. I've seen worse things. We recovered easily. And then Glenn wrote the...